Hey Pat. Okay, now I'm up. How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
I'm good. I'm good. We're in pretty good shape, I guess, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah, what we are.
Yeah, I went through everything and it looks great. So nice to see those letters, too. I love it.
Yeah. Looks like Susan's here.
Okay.
Hi, Susan. Nope, maybe she's muted. Okay. How's the grandkids and everything?
Everybody's good and healthy, knock on wood.
Good.
Yeah.
Yes, too.
A bit kind of neurotic about the whole thing. Me, not so much. So she's been, well, Bill's on first aid, so she gets nervous with him being on first. I get it, you know?
My daughter just went back to first aid last week. She's 19. She's an EMT and she's done with college for the first semester. I'm like, okay, I guess you're going back.
Yeah, well, they're talking about opening up schools in September, according to what Murphy.
Yes, I can.
Okay, good.
And I have restarted the recording of the meeting.
Okay. Good evening. The Middletown Township Public Library is a civic institution that provides materials, ideas, information, technology, and cultural opportunities to enrich, empower, and educate. The May 20, 2020 meeting of the Middletown Public Library Board of Trustees is called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was published in the Two River Times on December 19, 2019, and posted on the library website, library's social media platforms, and with the Two River Times for informational purposes on Friday, May 15, 2020, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and Assembly Number 3850, State of New Jersey, 219th Legislature, which allows public bodies to conduct meetings and provide notice by electronic means during periods of emergency. Roll call. Mr. Bucko.
Here.
Ms. Chanel?
Yeah.
Ms. Carrillo?
Here.
Mr. Phelan?
Here.
Mr. Van Ness?
Here.
Mr. Ferry?
He's here. He just is not, he's not able to speak.
Okay. Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Burson? And Mr. Renshaw. Also present is Mr. McCumber, Richard McCumber from McCumber &amp; McCumber.
Here.
Ms. Anderson? And Ms. Latona. Salute to the flag.
It's up to you guys.
Why don't we just say it together?
Let me do it?
Sure.
Okay. This is a test. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I think Matt is having trouble being with his microphone. Matt, there is a chat feature if you need to ask questions if you can't speak. Yeah, we can't hear you. Okay.
If he's on a computer at the bottom of the computer on the left, there's something that turns the sound on.
Yeah, he clicks the unmute.
Or that, too.
Yeah.
Also, at the bottom of the screen, if you take a look, there's a button that says lists number of participants, and there's a chat function there. You can click on that, and you can type messages for everybody to see.
Perfect.
I clicked unmute, not working. I'll keep the Zoom chat open, so if there's anything Matt you want to make it.
The other thing, somebody could dial him on their phone, so he could hear, and he could be heard.
Right.
Jim, you're muted.
Oh, can you hear us, Matt?
Yes. Okay. Guess we'll go to the agenda. The first item on the agenda, number three, I'll defer to Mr. Phelan.
Thank you. So what we have is we have a, I'm also a member of the Personnel Committee. As you know, the Personnel Committee advises the Board of Trustees on matters pertaining to Personnel Administration, Staffing, and Benefits. Specifically, the Committee provides overall policy guidance for Personnel matters in the library, review Personnel Policies as needed, submit for approval recommendations on Personnel Policy, matters to the Board of Trustees. They provide policy advice to the Library Director when requested in the areas of employee relations, benefit, training, compensation, recruitment, and retention. We review staff job descriptions, and we review wage and salary ranges and benefits. There was a meeting of the Personnel Committee that occurred on February 5, 2020. The members of the Personnel were all present, as well as the Director. The only existing non-union employee compensation that was discussed was Wendy Latona, the Secretary to the Board of Trustees, and evaluated library employees since January 4, 2010. The employee has been given an appropriate notice that this discussion would occur. The Board took into consideration the self-report of the employees' duties and responsibilities, as well as the review, recommendation, and request of the Library Director. We also reviewed wage and salary ranges and benefits for the position, as well as the history of the employees' compensation. Finally, we considered the fiscal implications and what would be in line with all non-union township employees. And at the conclusion, the Personnel Committee recommends that the Board adopt Propose Resolution 2020-12 to confer a 2% raise, retroactive to January 1, 2020, for Wendy Latona, with gratitude for her hard work. Thank you, Wendy. And at that point, I would,
Just before you do, is Mr. Bucko turning the chair of the meeting over to you?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bucko, you agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
So with that item, with the recommendation from the Personnel Committee, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-12 with a 2% raise?
Motion.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have? Would anybody like to comment? Okay. Can we have a vote then, please?
Yes. Ms. Bucko?
Same.
Ms. Chanel?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ness?
Stay in.
Mr. Ferry?
He's giving a thumbs up. I assume that's a yes. He gives a thumbs up? All right, that's a yes for Mr. Ferry.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next item on the agenda, approval of the February 18 regular session minutes. I only do have one correction in there on the last page. Just the last, the spelling of my last name, there's an F after the C. But other than that, can I get a motion to accept the February minutes with the correction?
I'll move.
Second.
Do you want to roll call, Mr. Bucko?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bucko?
Yes.
Ms. Chanel?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
He's giving a thumbs up. That's a yes.
He's also typing, just for the record, he is typing in the chat, his vote.
Yep.
I don't believe Mr. Ferry was at the February meeting, so I believe he'd have to abstain.
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is the fina, oh, do you want to take the?
That's fine, whatever, if you want, Wendy, that's fine, whatever you want to do.
No, go ahead, Mr. Bucko, it's fine.
Financial reports. We have the list of our voucher for 2020, the overview of the checks, and there was a 2019, 2020 financial report and a financial statement of assets for the last couple months.
Can you give us a broad picture as to what the finances of the library are looking like with the effect of COVID-19? Are we under budget, over budget? Imagine.
Sure, we're under budget and many of our lines, because we had to stop buying books. They weren't being shipped to New Jersey. So in the next few months, you'll see them bump back up to normal. We're under budget in salary because we didn't hire those three part-time people that we had agreed to hire at last meeting. We put that on hold because of the virus. So we are under budget, and even with spending money on some of the COVID stuff, we're still in really good shape. And some of the COVID stuff can also go back to the township in case they get reimbursed for any COVID expenses. So the township has been, we've been paying for it, but they have been keeping track of all those expenses for the library as well.
Good.
Just as a, Mr. President, we will, we have two sources of funding. So when we're talking about the supplies and things that the library has purchased, the town will seek reimbursement for them as well.
Okay, that's good to know. Any idea, just?
Real quick, Heather, could you let, or whoever is in charge of this meeting, Matt, left to try to come back in? He's in the waiting room. If you could try to let him back in?
Okay, thank you.
Only because, well, maybe I'll get to where it comes to the reports. I'll ask my questions on the, on the new hireries and stuff, and where, where kind of we just stand and where the township is going. But well, I think that'll be more appropriate for, once we get into that.
I also will say, we're obviously down in our programming line, and that's probably not coming back this year. I don't foresee us having paid programs, like performers and stuff, coming in anytime soon. And also, our museum passes, we stopped those because there was no sense buying more museum passes when people couldn't use the museums. So we are definitely under budget right now.
With that, if there are no other questions, if I could please get a motion to accept the, I guess, the March and April financials for the library?
Move.
Second.
If we could do the roll call, please?
Mr. Bucko?
Yes.
Ms. Chanel?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Abstain.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next item, the correspondences. There's quite a lot, and you know, my only comment, I mean, excellent work by all staff, and in these trying times, it is nice to hear good news and accolades, and so the only thing that I would request, and if Mr. McCumber, I don't know what, where we stand on any legal grounds, is when we do get these correspondences, not knowing whether or not that these packets are subject to open public meeting, Oprah requests, whether or not we can, just the civilians' email addresses, if they could be blacked out instead of the public email addresses. That was just something I noticed. And if they can't, that's fine. I just.
I think, I hadn't thought about it, but I have no problem blocking it out. And if somebody wants to press us, then we'll rule on, you know, a particular letter or a particular item of correspondence.
And I just, I'm just talking about a patron who sends an email or someone else who hosted a program. I'm not saying that we block out the library employees' emails or who it was sent to, just, I think, more for privacy purposes for the patrons.
Good idea.
In so doing, then we have to do it on all the correspondence, you know, from, you know, from patrons of the library. In other words, if somebody writes a very wonderful letter, it's going to be blocked out. And if somebody writes a letter that's not so wonderful, that similarly would have to be blocked out.
Yes.
Mr. Bucko?
Yes.
In the past, we've always given the Board the emails as is, and then if they're ever opened, the Township Clerk redacts the personal information. So the only parties that see that is the Board of Trustees.
Oh, okay. No, that's fine, then. Then we could leave it as is. And I didn't know if these were put up on our website as part of the packets for our meetings coming up. So, and if that's how it is, and that's perfect, then we can leave it as is, then.
We only post the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Also, we had one additional correspondence yesterday. We had Ms. Burson's resignation letter. Would you like me to read that? You do not have a copy of it because it came yesterday.
Yeah, I was gonna just mention that in my report that she has resigned. And then I was going to ask that you share it with the rest of the Board, either after this meeting or tomorrow, but it's a good segue into the reports. Regretfully, we did receive a letter of resignation on Monday from our secretary, our person, effective immediately to resign from the Board. She also is, excuse me, she was also our secretary. So we will have a vacancy that we will need to fill. Excuse me, and probably we'll discuss that more at the next meeting. This kind of came at the last minute, so. But that's, wish her well. Thankfully for us, she is staying local. And she still offered to be a part of our 100-year celebration. She was very involved with the township when they contracted the 350, 350-year celebration of the township. So having her around still will be a great asset, and I would just like to thank her for all her years of service on the Library Board and to the Township and to the residents of Middletown. And her absence will be sorely missed.
Mr. Bucko, I don't know what the practice of the Board is. Do you formally, you know, acknowledge and accept the resignation as a motion, or do you just enter it into the record?
We just entered it into the record, and then.
That's fine.
Yeah, and then Wendy will alert the Township Clerk, and then who will, in turn, alert the Township Committee, and then they will appoint a new, a new representative to fill that particular seat.
Thank you.
Finance, we kind of spoke about, and just personnel. So obviously, there's no, there was no finance or Personnel Committee meeting, but Heather, you kind of touched on it a little bit, and I just wanted to know from you is, where are you hearing from the township of when they would start opening up again? Possibly hiring? Again, I know a lot of government entities are on a hire freeze right now. Do they have an end date to that, or is it still?
Um.
Or I don't know if Jim can answer to that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're under official hiring freeze. I did decide to resend the three, we had two job offers out there for the part-time positions that we had offered, and I did resend those because of the virus. And we never interviewed for the third position, so that's just on hold for right now. I think libraries are going to be a little bit different than the township. They will probably be start staffing up and gearing up, step up more fully. I think around June 1. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes, we, I said it's Pat. We discussed that at the last, and announced it actually, at the last Township Committee meeting, and the mayor said he was going to start to open up Town Hall on June 1.
Right. Libraries.
Heather, if I could, right now, we are, we are still kind of under a hiring freeze because we can't get new employment physicals done.
Correct.
So if, so if there was an emergency hire that we absolutely needed, we could probably make arrangements to have them go someplace to get a physical, but our normal place to go, moving in occupational health, is not doing new employment physicals right now.
Okay.
So that would jam it up a little bit. But I know the person that you've gone from temp to perm was already here, so she already had her physical.
Right, that's why we did that, because it would make life much easier. So as far as these three employees, I see for the foreseeable future it being on hold. If I'm not opened up fully to the staff, you know, six days a week, back to normal hours, that's going to impact the staff that we needed. So I don't anticipate bringing them onboard anytime soon. Of course, if I did see that, I would talk to you about, about where we are in with that. Again, like I said, if we're not programming and we're not fully allowing people into the building, it's really going to impact what we need right now.
The Director's Report. Heather, if you just, I know it was right here is very, very detailed, and rather than read through it, I just, is there anyone have any questions maybe for Heather? Heather, if you just want to maybe do some highlight points, just a couple bullet points on that?
Sure.
For April.
The staff has really been working a lot at home. I have to give them a lot of kudos. They have found ways to reinvent library services. Lot of, a lot of the staff are working on how-to videos for our public, getting our virtual stuff out there. And even some of our staff, for example, we have a part-time library assistant who, her job is circulation and to put books away. So right now, she's not doing much in the library. I'm sorry, at home, when she's in the library, she does her job. So she took on kind of an independent project. She decided to do research on women's rights and find out all our resources in the library and make like a book list for us. So when we come back, we can pull these books, have some nice displays. She, she did an in-depth dive into that, and I thought that was really fantastic that she took on that initiative. We've been very busy with our virtual services and our social media. We have been very busy going through the stacks and cleaning up the stacks, which means we're reading what we don't need, condensing books, processing materials. So the staff has been very busy. They've been doing webinars. And even now, we've had a chance to work on the building since we haven't had anyone in there, so we were able to get some of the light fixtures done we needed to get done. John and Ed, our maintenance people, have been fantastic. They are still in the buildings every day, keeping them clean for us. I had a staff member tell me today she actually felt safe coming back to work. She was, said that she has no fears coming back to work with the building. We've been putting up our plastic shields on the counters. We've been getting ready for, in case we do let customers back in. We have had staff move around so we can make sure they're six feet apart. So we've been keeping very, very busy, and I think it's been a good time for everyone to get some other projects that we've been working on.
Very good. Thank you, Heather. And you know, I'm going to save my sentiments and comments for the good of the order. All business, I guess, the discussion of the resolution, the update on the New Jersey construction bond.
Okay, so as you know, that was moved to June. The deadline is June 5. I talked with our architect firm yesterday, and we are in good shape to put in for this, for this construction bond. I asked him if a lot of people have dropped out, because maybe some libraries are kind of hurting financially. He said, no, more are putting in for it. So it is very competitive, but I feel like we're in very good shape for it. I have, I plan to finish it up next week with the architect firm, and then I will be submitting it before June 5. We, we have, I've given you lots of documentation. One of the things I do want to talk to you about is the cost, which I am looking at. It's basically a couple pages in. It's the seventh page in, and it says, Middletown Library of Innovation Project is a spreadsheet. And you could see at the bottom right-hand corner, the total estimated cost for all projected, for the proposed project is $3,205,813. So we would be putting in half of that money. And that covers the cost of replacing the three air conditioning HVAC units we still have to replace on the roof. That covers fixing the roof and giving us the 25-year warranty. That also covers the idea of a new internal renovation of pieces of the live, of parts of the library, where we'd make a history room, which is included in your report, the schematics. And one of the things we really kind of concentrated on at this point was the fact that social distancing is probably going to be a norm of the future. So this proposed history room gives us more space in the library for customers to spread out. It also would be able to move things around with the tables for programming in the future. It adds a second fireplace, so people again are not all sitting around that one fireplace. It brings in our museum pieces we talked about to try to get exhibits out there, and it's a way for us to, I think, better use the space. So that's kind of where we are with it.
This is great. Heather, I just had one question on that, on just the proposed project page, where it says roof HVAC equipment replacement from line of 785-5. Excuse me. Now, is that including? Because it was my understanding that, you know, we, we essentially reserved the $300,000 in January for the three new HVACs, where the biggest one would cost $90,000 to $100,000. Is this including from the direct install as well, the other two? I just, I get just more clarity as to what roof HVAC equipment replacement that is.
I don't have the answer to that, so I will talk to Kurt tomorrow, and can I email the Board that answer?
Yeah, I would be fine with that if everyone else is.
Okay, um, I do know that it's not just the three HVACs that have to be replaced. There's a, there's a part above Andy's computer room that has to be replaced as well, because we had problems with overheating. Because we had problems with overheating. I will have to look at that further. About that cost. I don't know, Wendy, if you have any insight on that cost?
Not the cost, but the repair for above Andy's that had to do with the, I believe that had to do with Red Hawk with. The sensors and for the sprinkler system. System and that was affected. So that's been repaired already. The HVACs that are being replaced up on the roof, the three HVACs that are being replaced on the roof that you're going out for the grant for. They're, they have nothing to do anymore with the direct install program. They, they don't qualify for any of those, a part of that grant. Only the ones that we did just do. Qualified. So this, these are, this would be a brand new. RFP that would go out if we, if we were to get the grant, we would have to go out for. For an RFP for those services.
So Wendy, Heather, my next question is though, is if we, because I know we've kind of had a kind of had conversations about with the HVAC system. If we go out to bid now for those. And get them replaced, can we be reimbursed with the grant or do we have to wait for the approval or denial of the grant?
We have to wait for the approval or denial of the grant. And when I talked to Kurt about that, I asked him how long they're going to last and. He seemed to think we'll be okay through the summer. There are a bunch of reports in here about what they found. And I'm trying to go through that. So. We will find out in September if we got the grant or not.
Okay, then I would just want to make sure then, and if you can double check with Colleen, then. Worst case, we do get the denial. Of the grant and then we choose to go out to bid in, let's say, October. And, you know, they don't finish till January, February, that we're still okay with that. Resolution that we did in the beginning of the year of the 300,000.
Yes.
If you could just check with Colleen on that and just to make sure that, does it have to be expended and cleared or as long as it's encumbered within this calendar year, we'll be fine.
Yeah, I am, I am wondering about that number myself now that you brought it up. So I would definitely would call him first thing tomorrow and figure out what that number came from. He did. He did put some other number in. That was not correct that we caught some, that could be the case, so.
Okay.
Heather.
Yes.
I, I know that you've been, we've been talking, theorizing with Tony Maricante about. Coronavirus proofing, you know, putting a drive through window in. Has that gone, has that gone any further and would that, would that interfere with the history room or, I mean?
Let me fill the board in. As Jim mentioned previously, there are some monies coming from the county and from FEMA for COVID related expenses. And one of the things we talked about was. You know, if, when this happens again, how do we make sure we can continue services in the future? And Tony Maricante said, you know, kind of think outside the box. So I suggested, you know, if we had had a drive up. Window at the library, we probably could have done the whole curbside thing from the very beginning. And we'd be able to share it with the town as well, so that people could come up and have town business done as well. So Tony and I have been talking about that with Jim. So it's just a theory at this point. It's just, but I did talk to Kurt yesterday, the architect about this. If it does not impact this grant at all, it would not impact the history room at all. And matter of fact, he knew where it would go before I even opened my mouth. He goes, I know your building so well. He goes, the technical processing area would be perfect for it. So it's already almost perfect for it. So it does not affect this, does not affect the history room. It might affect speed bumps we're putting in, very minor, but that's it. So if that goes forward with Tony, Maricante and the other money, of course, we'll come back and talk about that, but right now we're just all in theory and talking about it.
Good. I just, I just wanted to be sure that. The spot where the history room was wouldn't be the spot for a drive through.
Me too.
Yeah, all right, good, thanks.
Because you mentioned the speed bumps, those are like quote unquote portable ones that they're putting in. Or is it a built up like?
It's gonna, they're, they're allowing us to build up ones there.
Okay.
But, um.
It's asphalt, so it's easy to be removed.
Right, and it may not, if we even did this drive through in the near, in the future, it might only be one that has to be taken out. It would not really impact that. And we are working on the speed bumps, by the way. COVID likes to mess with things.
Yeah. And don't we, doesn't it mess with a lot of things? Okay, so the.
Heather, I. I, this hasn't been reviewed by the finance committee. I mean, I. None of this, I know, I see that it's dated May 4th. I, you know, I have some concerns about the dollar amount of the project and just that, you know, it's. You know, this is $3 million that we're talking about and I understand that we're looking to obtain a grant, a grant for a large portion of it. Certain of this is contingent upon us getting the approval and an award of a grant from the state. But I, you know, I have serious reservations about some of this stuff and I know that we haven't talked about some of these items before, like the boilers. I know, we, you've got a line item here on this page for $235,000. You know, before I'd feel comfortable. You know, going forward with this, I, I'd like to see the full reports and I'm not sure that. It's appropriate for us to necessarily submit this. You know, based upon these numbers, that's, that's a lot of money. I mean, when we were talking before. We were talking, we were saying, maybe we'll have. 300,000 in reserves and that, you know, we're maybe counting on some outside sources. As have yet to be disclosed, that would result in maybe a million dollars that we would then budget 500,000 of that towards the construction. So that we were thinking, you know, about $800,000 would be going in. But, you know, if we're aiming for half of this, you know, we're talking about 1.5 million dollars. That's a lot of money to come up with. I mean, we're looking at third quarter revenues in township. That are going to be, you know, pretty, pretty abysmal. So I, I mean, I, you know, I understand you, you know, you have the, there's, there's a deadline of June 4th to submit this and I'm. Look, I'm, I'm fine with submitting this from you to the, for an application. But I'm, I'm, I'm going to put on the record, I'm not okay with these numbers as is. And I understand it would go out to bid for this, but there's a lot of stuff in here that was not discussed that was. You know, I'm not sure that we necessarily need. I mean, we would have to see the reports and evaluate a lot of this stuff.
Rob, what I can do is tomorrow I'm going to be in the library and I'm working with Margaret to fill in the numbers. And I can have Kurt meet with the finance committee via Zoom to go over everything.
Because I'm looking at this and, you know, frankly, I mean, I'm adding the numbers in the right hand column and they don't even add up.
Okay. I will call Kurt tomorrow and set up a Zoom meeting if you guys can, if the finance committee can meet.
We, we can do that and Heather, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, I, you know, I guess when I saw that 785 for the new HVACs, it kind of jumped out at me. And you're right, there were some things on here that we never then necessarily discussed going forward, but was it also though? It was my understanding that. When we discussed about this. Early on. They had just come out with what would be approved in this grant or they weren't sure yet. So I don't know, to me and Heather, please, if I'm wrong. That. A lot of these things like the boiler, like interiors, specialty fixtures and stuff where. Maybe when we had the discussion early on, it was not going to be covered in part of this grant. And now that it could be. Kind of tack it on to see if we get it. I don't, I, I don't know if that was the.
I, I don't know how the answer to that, Bill, so I wouldn't.
I don't know if that, yeah, if that was the.
I, I agree with Rob that at this point, um, that we should get Kurt to come in and have a meeting, but we're going to have to set up quickly. So is it possible if?
Look, I'm, listen, we could probably have it quickly, especially if it's by Zoom.
Right.
But I think for purposes of the meeting for the board's approval. To go forward for, like Rob said, for you to submit this to, to the state. Because if we submit this to the state and they approve it, I mean, we're not binding that we have to do every single thing that we submitted, correct?
Um. I have to go back and read, we would, we would have to sign stuff for it, obviously. I would have to go back and read what the binding language is. It might be in the frequently asked questions that you may have some of them. I don't know that, so I honestly think, Bill, that. We need to get the answers that the board has questions to.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not in a position to be able to commit. To spending $3 million. I mean, I understand it's going to be half, 1.5 potentially. But you know, that's a, that's, that's a big commitment that we're talking about here and we don't know what our finances are going to be next year.
Here's, here's something I do know. Um. I asked the state librarian about. The 20% give back to the town. If there's, if we, if we don't spend all our money and there's money left over. You know, if you go past that 20% cap, then the town can get it back for tax relief purposes. So I asked the state librarian about a week ago, I said, this is a very extraordinary year. And many of us may not spend our budgets out like we had presumed. Is there going to be any exemptions? So next year, when this money comes back, people don't go, oh, all that money's sitting there. But we haven't been able to order books for six months. So it really is going to impact, you know, how much money is sitting there. There is. Going to probably be no exemption still. So basically. I'm not saying to spend it just to spend it, but I'm also saying that if we start, you know, we'll start adding, adding to that pot, we, it will be going back. To the township for tax related purposes.
I. Can I just ask a question, please? What is the, the new boiler, six of them, right? At $39,000 each, what, is that something that is a necessary item?
I honestly have to say no. I don't know why that's in there. This is why I, I am.
Okay, so look, we have a plan. You're going to call the Zoom, you know, you're going to call a Zoom meeting with the finance. You all can go through those numbers. Perhaps we, can we do something vote by email once those numbers are straightened out so you can still meet the deadline of June 4th?
That's what I would ask to, if we could possibly do. Could we table this resolution until we talk more about the numbers?
Can we, can we just vote by email? For this resolution or do we need to have another? Quote unquote, public meeting to approve this or? If we approve it with the stipulation that once the finance committee meets. And it's resubmitted that we can vote by email.
I would like to know what, what we'd be voting on with very, with specificity.
Mr. Bucko, respectful recommendation. You know, this is a substantial dollar item. And we're filing an application. It certainly can't hurt if the board would have a special meeting scheduled to just go through that one item. Resolve some of the questions that various board members and the director have asked.
Yes, I have questions.
Everybody can feel comfortable when we submit the application. Yes, it's a good application. We understand it and we agree with it. So when, Heather, when does a application have to win?
It has to go on June 5th, so we have two weeks. Tomorrow I will contact DMR and set up the meeting. The separate meeting with the finances committee via Zoom. And then at that point, the finance committee will be able to ask their questions. They can then discuss. And make a recommendation back to us, to the board for a special meeting for exactly what we will be, what the board would be voting for.
So I'm, I'm looking at the calendar either June 2nd or 3rd, which is a Tuesday or a Wednesday.
The two, if you could do the Tuesday, because I'm going to need time to get this in. I, I need hours a day to get this in. This is not just push a button.
Why can't we try to? Do it one day next week?
Or then we do maybe the 28th, I'm just thinking.
Would the finance committee be available for Tuesday for a meeting since Monday is Memorial Day?
I am.
Yes, I am.
Well, if it's in the evening, like seven o'clock, you know, I, I, I would like to get all of the attachments to this report. I mean, I'm sure that this is.
I got some more stuff yesterday, Rob, so I will send it out tomorrow morning. I may have to do a couple of separate emails, but I'll send out everything I have.
That's fine. If we could do maybe the 26th for the finance committee meeting at seven o'clock, does that work for? You know, Pat and Rob, and you guys are the ones that are here that are on the finance committee.
Works for me, Bob. I'm, I'm fine.
I can do it.
Okay.
Great.
And then I'll let John know. Yeah, I'll let John know. That we will have a Zoom finance meeting on May 26th at.
Seven.
7:00 PM and then we will hold a special meeting. On. June 2nd. Okay, 7 o'clock via Zoom. To approve. Resolution 2020-14.
Does that give you enough time, Heather? I mean.
It does. I, I am almost done with everything I have to do on my end. So that gives me plenty of time. Thank you. I appreciate your patience with this. I also want to say, you know, if, if after the numbers aren't adding up, then we don't have to have, you know, I'm not going to spend the money willy nilly, so.
Heather, I think that the one thing that's a bit troubling when it comes to the money amount. Especially speaking to Bob's concerns, is the unpredictability of next year.
Right.
You know, we don't know what revenues are going to be. We're hopeful on what they're going to be, but there is nothing that's telling us. Anything because it depends on when everything opens up. And I guess that leads a question for you with this opening, which is going to relate to. You know, everything else that follows. Does the library? Sort of work with the schools? On timing is, does the library, would they make it a point to open? Prior to the schools if possible? I mean, I know it all depends on the governor, so I understand that. But I'm thinking that the schools and the library should sort of work together.
Well, we did when we closed. When they closed, we closed right away because we were concerned about kids being left in the library.
Right.
Um. I. I suspect if the libraries are open to, if we're able to open this summer, we're going to, regardless of the schools open or not. If it comes down to the schools still being closed in the fall. I think we would have to be very. We would have to really make sure our unintended children policies are enforced.
Correct.
Because I would not want to have to close down the library for the whole community if we don't have to. I mean, this, this time around we did, but if it's just because the schools are closed, I don't necessarily want to have to close down the library. So the kids aren't coming into the libraries all day.
Well, I think the governor is making a strong push right now to get schools open in September.
Yes.
You know, so unless we hear differently, I'm going to roll with that. So that's just my thoughts about, you know, the $3 million. I think we need to spend what we need to spend, but I don't think we need to overspend on things that perhaps we can work around.
Sure.
Heather, just a point of clarification, if I can.
Yes.
Budget next year for the library, the, the amount of money the library is going to receive is based upon this year's assessments.
Yes.
Which are about to be finalized and are up a small percentage. So the library budget next year will be up a small percentage from this year. They really, the real worry we would have if property values should fall, you know, during the recession would be. They really, the real worry we would have, i- if property values should fall, you know, during the recession, would be 2022.
Right, right. I also, um, I'm also gonna look for the language about the signing of this, because if they come back in September and say, you are granted this amount, we would then sign paperwork in October. We wouldn't even start this project until next year, after we get through permits and stuff. So I will look into the language about if we are awarded this, you know, can we still pull out by a certain time as well?
Yeah, I would, I would definitely like to know whether or not we can, you know, like this is broken down into three, you know, separate items. You know, if we submit for all and they award us all, can we say, thank you very much, we're just gonna proceed with one and two?
Right. We did decide to submit it as one grant, so they can either give us the entire amount or just a portion of the amount. It's paperwork-wise, it's much easier. It doesn't mean that we don't have to, we get all the money, or, or it's just a paperwork issue.
But then, but then the way, where you're describing it, it's their discretion, whether or not we, you know, you're submitting for everything. And it's up to them whether or not they decide to give us money. They may say, you've applied for one, two, and three. We'll give you money for one and two, not three. But my concern is, is that if you submit for one, two, and three, and then they say, congratulations, you got the money. And, you know, we say, well, now we don't wanna do three, then they say, you can't do that. Your whole grant was one grant. And so my thinking, you know, is perhaps you should investigate and consider, should we do separate grants if necessary? Even if it's duplicative paperwork, I, I, you know, that may be a better item to, a better manner to proceed, doing it separately. And I think, you know, we should look into that and we should have an answer.
Yeah, and I did talk with the architect about that, the consulting firm, and they suggested doing it as one, but I will revisit that.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, we paid a lot of money to that architect for the, for the proposal, right? So they should be able to answer some of these questions and, you know, I-
I mean, also, Rob, just, you know, sometimes when these proposals go in, you know, you kind of put more than what you initially would want with the understanding, you know, with going in there thinking that, okay, they're gonna say, well, we can approve this, but you gotta get rid of, you gotta get rid of something. Like, we're gonna approve you for two-thirds of what you want, but you gotta get rid of a third. And then you can come back and say, okay, well, we'll get rid of this. That's fine, because clearly, I mean, for our purposes, the roof and, and the history room were a top priority, were a priority in project.
No, I thought it was the roof and the HVAC.
Oh, that, oh, the, yeah, the roof and the HVACs and, sorry, thank you, Heather, but yeah. Look, I think we'll get more, we'll get more answers on Tuesday. And then Heather, if you don't mind, just sending a confirmation to Pat, myself, Rob, and John for that meeting.
Okay, yep.
With the Zoom link and everything, and then we'll be able to report back. And you or Wendy, if you could just please submit the notice to the papers for our special meeting for June 2nd. Okay.
7:00 PM?
7:00 PM, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. McCumber, do we need to do any formal vote to table Resolution 2020-14, or can we proceed?
My recommendation would be do a formal vote. You can never get in trouble doing a formal vote. And then I think, secondly, there should be a motion for a special meeting on June 2nd. That should be a second formal vote.
Okay, so I will make the motion to table Resolution 2020-14. Can I get a second, please?
I second that motion.
Mr. Bucko?
Yes.
Mr. Phelan?
The yes table.
Ms. Schnell?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillos?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes, the table.
And Mr. Van Ness?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would move a resolution to schedule a special meeting for Tuesday, June 2nd, at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Can I get a second?
I second that motion.
Yes.
Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
Ms. Schnell?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillos?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Mr. Van Ness?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 2020, 2015. Excuse me. Uh, the library had received a very generous donation from a former patron of ours who tragically passed away a few years ago, Marilyn Purdy. And the Middletown Library was a benefactor, beneficiary of her estate. And a couple of weeks ago, the library received a donation from her estate in the amount of $950,000. And I just would like to thank Mr. McCumber for his efforts. It hasn't been quite easy sometimes, but I do appreciate his efforts. And we, of course, would like to thank and honor the memory of Ms. Purdy for her generosity to us. The library must have been a special place for her. The Art Council and our director have reached out to Ms. Purdy's estate attorney to have some biographical information on her. We are still waiting for that, but we, of course, would like to honor her and thank her properly for this generous donation to us. We are very grateful, particularly with what we are discussing about spending and renovating the library. This, this definitely would come in handy. Now, Resolution 2020-15. I have, the only question I would have now, given that Ms. Burson is no longer the secretary. I don't know if myself and another executive board member can take all other actions deemed necessary, given that Ms. Burson and I had signed the Resolution 2020-13. And the only correction I would make on this resolution, that Ms. Fox is the secret, is the treasurer, and Ms. Burson was the-
I corrected it, my revised one that I have in front of me.
Okay, but Mr. McCumber, are we able to have another executive board member take the place of the secretary, given that, even though that the Ms. Burson and I did sign the 2020-13 resolution?
My, my recommendation is, in all likelihood, the, isn't the bank opening up a special account for this?
Yes, that's why we need the signers.
So my recommendation would be that it'd be the three remaining. And then if you wanna add somebody else when that position is filled, you could always do another resolution.
Okay.
And the way the, this resolution is written, not the bank resolution, but this resolution, it looks like anyone can sign. Now, the, the bank made a resolution, you may wanna say two can sign, but, you know, that's up to the board. The way I read this resolution, any one of the signers, or any one of these names can sign. Do we know, is the other resolution, the one that was formally adopted, does it require two signatures or just one?
The 2020-13 resolution, I believe it was the one that you had created. It was to, or am I right, Wendy? It was the one that came from-
I have it, I have a copy here, Mr. Bucko, if you want me to read it.
If you don't mind, please, just, it just requires one signature?
Um, it says, "Reserve the trustees of the Free Public Library of the Township of Middletown to agree to and shall by these presents except a gift from the estate of Marilyn Purdy, who died as a resident of Middletown, New Jersey. Be it further resolved, the president and secretary of the library respectively are authorized to sign a refunding bond and release in favor of Dana Bennett Esquire and the
We will, we will put that in place. If there is no guidance set, we will set a probably very small number. And that's why when we first opened, it's going to be appointments.
Right.
They do at the grocery store, you know, you can come in now and since this person has left.
Right, okay.
Quick question for you, it's Pat. Is there anything you want me to either go back to committee with or find out from them? Is there anything that I can help you with in that respect?
Well, I do have a lot of open questions, but we're not there yet, Pat. I can go through and kind of highlight them. For example, once we do open to the public, I have no idea what the bathroom situation is going to be. I don't know what the guidelines are going to be.
Right.
So for right now, for phase two and 2.5 with bringing back the materials and allowing curbside, I think we're good with her, with her questions.
That's a good first step, yes, absolutely.
But yeah, I'll go through and start kind of highlighting those that we will definitely have questions about.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions on this plan, I will offer the motion to accept the Middletown Township Public Library Health Emergency Library Plan as submitted by Heather. Can I get a second?
I'll second it. Mr. Bucko?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillos?
Yes.
Ms. Schnell?
Yes.
Mr. Phelan?
Rob, you're muted.
No.
Mr. Bucko, did Mr. Phelan reject the plan?
He said no, yes, that was his vote, no.
Okay. Mr. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Okay. Next, vote on the new logo.
Bill, let me just ask one more question. Are you comfortable then, because there are no dates in this? Are you comfortable with delivery of the materials coming back next week and starting the curbside on June 8th? Or do you still want to hold off on any of that?
Oh, I, I, I mean, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but that would have been my...
Okay.
I, I know that the dates are open-ended because we do need guidance from the governor.
Right.
Which then, I know we'll take guidance from, you know, then the, you know, the county will get guidance from the governor as well as the township. So I, we would take our...
If anything changes dramatically, obviously, I would, I would let the board know.
Yeah, no, and, and again, when I voted on this, it was my understanding that this is a...
My concern with this document is that, you know, we don't have official guidance from the governor and township as to what's going to govern the opening and closing. And so I'm a little bit uncomfortable committing open-ended to a document. I think it's a good policy. I, you know, I look forward to revisiting it at a future meeting and perhaps adopting it. But I, you know, I'm not sure that we can, I, I'm uncomfortable, that's why I voted no as to it. I mean, I know...
I, I would think, with all due respect, that the township would be working closely with the library and any other public gathering place in terms of being very clear and specific on when they can open and how they can handle it. Maybe Jim can speak to that, or Pat?
Yes, absolutely, Susan, you're absolutely right. I think there will be much communication over the next 30 days because there's hopefully going to be a lot of things going on and movement being made. So I think the direct communication is going to be there with the town, which will come down through them from the governor. So I, I think we'll be okay. And if for some reason something happens and it upsets the apple cart and we need to move the date, I think we can still do that if, if that is the case. So I, I, I think to sort of have a target is not a bad idea at this point, just so we can prepare and get ready.
Right.
Throw it out to everyone else as well.
I also think, Heather, that you've created, I mean, it's an excellent policy, but as you said, when you prefaced the presentation of it, that this is a living document that will probably be changing and adapting as we move forward. So, thank you.
And I wanted to give the staff something to take a look at so they have some guidance of where we're going as, as a library.
Now, I also think this is good for morale for the, for the staff as well, even with uncertainty and, and the national, and the neat natural fear of coming into work, you know, in a public place, in a public building. I think having this in place and knowing that their employers are taking their health and well-being seriously, I think is also good for morale. So, again, kudos to you, Heather, and Wendy, and the, and I see Eileen is on this call as well on the meeting. And to the rest of the work group, really, congratulations. This was a really well-thought-out, very thorough piece and great thing to move forward with.
Okay.
Let me just say, go ahead, I'm sorry, Pat, go ahead.
I, I just was going to say, I think it's also good for the morale of the residents. I, I, they are looking for things to get better. And if we can do it little by little in these small steps that we're taking here at the library, it just gives them a ray of hope that, you know, things are going to get better. And the library is such a focal point of the community. I think it's nice to see us showing the residents that we're trying to move along. So, you know, not only the staff, I agree that the staff needs it as well, but I think for the residents is just as important.
Yeah, I agree.
And let me also just say that throughout this entire process, Heather has been in contact with township administration.
You know, the decision to close the library was taken in consultation with, with Mr. McContante.
This, this whole plan, we've been meeting, as all department heads, we've been meeting three times weekly throughout this. And Heather has, we've been discussing library reopening inch by inch throughout this whole time. So, yeah, this is not something that Heather's just dreamed up. She put the plan, she put the plan together. But I mean, this is all being done in consultation with the town, which in turn is following the county and, and the state guidelines.
And Jim, can you tell us, is the county and town, are they offering, you know, revised hours? I mean, that was one of the things that leaked out to me, was that...
The town, the town will be going to revised hours beginning June the 1st.
Right, but I, I understand that they're revising their hours, but are they limiting? I mean, in phase three of this document, you know, I see that there's, you know, senior compromised hours for 9:30 to 11 o'clock. And then caregiver children hours from 11 to 2 o'clock, and regular patron hours from 2 to 5 o'clock.
Well, a couple of things about that. Yes, the, the town i- is doing limited hours beginning June the 1st. But I also think that the library is a little different than township buildings in that, you know, people are coming in for specific purposes and we're going to get them in and out, which is why we're, we're adjusting our hours. The library, everybody comes in at different times and wants to congregate together. So I think Heather's plan to keep people kind of segregated is, is also a good one. But again, this is something that can be revised.
Absolutely.
If two weeks from now, things are opened up, you know, much better, we can, we can always move to, you know, later stages.
Right.
And that's my concern is that adopting this a formal policy is that we'll have to vote on each time. I mean, I'd be more comfortable getting guidance from the township and the county as to what they're doing, rather than adopting this and having a hard-line policy of saying, you know, senior citizens can only come in from 9:30 to 11 o'clock, and you're, you're excluded from those times. And, you know, if some taxpayer says, you know, I, you know, I, I work during the rest of the time, I want to come in from 9:30 to 11 o'clock, we legally are able to exclude them. And, you know, under this policy that's proposed, it would seem that they'd be able to do that. And I'm just not sure that we can do that without guidance from township, county, and state as of yet. So I, I, I do like this and I appreciate that a lot of hard work has gone into. I'm just thinking that this may be premature for us as the board to adopt as a formal policy for the library at this juncture.
And Rob, I understand that, and I, I am happy to, like I said, just implement the two stages right now. And certainly, once we get more guidance, I'm happy to write the additional phases as we go. That, that is not a problem for me and the staff. I just wanted to have, and I don't even have to necessarily... It could be a procedure and not necessarily a policy, so it's a guideline right now? Yeah, I think it's more of a guideline. So if, if that, you know, we can certainly, this is going, we can bring it out at every meeting and take a look at it.
Yeah, I, I'd feel more comfortable if it was something not a, you know, a policy formally adopted by the, by the board. You know, this is a guideline that you're following in conjunction with the township administration.
Respectfully, the motion passed, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I just, yeah. All right, I just, no, and, you know, Rob brings up a lot of good points and... But I think because we are all in uncharted territories right now, you know, everyone's kind of doing this as we go along because of the uncertainty and because of some of the conflicting information coming from Trenton or, you know, Washington or whatever. So, but given that it passed, that we will, I think we could, I think, so we're not continuing to, you know, relay the point. If we move on to the next item under new business, which is the vote on the new logo. I'm sorry, Susan, did you want to say something?
Just wanted to point out, it says "plan." It's a plan. So to me, that's a, that's an, you know, it's an actual item that has been delineated for us so we understand what Heather and her team are planning to do in, in concordance with the township, which of course will be coming down from the governor's office through the county. So seems to me like this is something that could be implemented and adjusted as we need to. And I'm not sure, maybe Mr. McCumber can, can advise us whether we would actually need to vote on every change if it's something that's coming from the township as a directive.
Respectfully, I think your point's extremely well-taken. It's a plan, we're not adopting this for the next 10 years. We're in an emergency situation, a lot of thought has gone into this. It's a reasonable plan. If we ever have to defend it, by the time we have to defend it, probably it will have changed. So I, you know, I, it's a good first step, and we have a good executive director who's going to implement it, and she can loosen it or tighten it, as the township and the county and the governor suggest or demand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new logo.
I took together, of course, this is, these are drafts. So if these still don't work, we will go back to the drawing board. I want to get it right. What you're seeing is not from a great printer. Obviously, it's going to be cleaner. And we're going to make sure that the Native American on the book is the actual Native American logo that the town is using. This was not, Tara pointed out to me. So this is some of your suggestions. This is, this is the direction we went in, so I'd like to hear some feedback.
Well, my four-year-old son likes this one, so this is my vote.
Okay.
He, he, he says, "I like this one, Daddy," and he did the checkmark. So I'm compelled to vote for this one.
An ad hoc member.
But just, the, the difference is the color in there. Is it a gray, grayish color, grayish?
We added the gray, because we're kind of going...
One's gray and the other one's white.
Okay, so...
We're kind of going with more of a bluish-gray color tones, that's why.
Got it, okay.
And this doesn't have to be adapted tonight, it's not urgent, so, you know...
I would, I would like, I don't know if anybody was around when we did the, the last logo, but this looks very similar to one of the ones that was created previously in the, when we had our, this contest. This looks, whichever, it doesn't matter. This looks very similar to one of the ones, I mean, it doesn't matter today, but one of the ones that was previously created.
And, and it could be, we could have took some direction from some of the stuff that we've seen around. I also wanted to get, I, my idea was to kind of brand us more with the town. And I felt that the logo that we currently have doesn't necessarily say "Middletown" on it to me. That's why we went back in this direction a little bit.
Heather, it's Rob.
That's fine, but what I'm looking at, it says "Middletown Public Library" right at the top of it, the previous, like the other one that was created. I'm not, I'm just saying, I...
Yes, it does, it does. But I, I thought from a branding standpoint, if someone wasn't familiar with our logos, if they saw this, they, they kind of know that's Middletown's logo, like if they're from Middletown.
From a branding standpoint, don't, shouldn't there be three levels of a logo, a giant, and then moving it down to, to where it's one lo, like...
Sure, I, I would love some feedback on it. Um, like I said...
Typically, when it's a, a, like, I don't ca, I just, I think this is...
It's not...
This is just my opinion. Branding a logo should be ve- very recognizable and it should be able to be broken down into three separate categories. One for, you know, one for letterhead, one for maybe a t-shirt, like there... But it's, I, I feel like it all should tie into one. Like if somebody saw that, they know, oh, that's Middletown Library. I don't know, that's just, that's just my...
I appreciate the feedback. I'm not an expert in this, so I definitely appreciate the feedback. So we can certainly, you know, look into it a little bit more as well. That's why I'm asking for some direction.
What, what is, I, I don't know that I would recognize even our township logo. I hate to say that, but... Is that the one you're use, you're making this, you're using?
Yes, and the township logo...
Is pretty similar.
It, it is, yes.
The colors are the same.
Uh, Jim, help me out.
The township is black, I think the township is black. But maybe Heather, you know, you got some feedback. And maybe you tweak it.
Heather, I, I, it's, this is, you know, I'm not comfortable voting on this. This looks like a little preliminary to me. I mean, I think that the, you know, we have some, you know, orders which haven't been done professionally.
No, I know that, we're, we're all working from home with different, with different printers.
And, you know, but the, I believe also the, the, the technical term is "kerning", which is the spacing between the letters. You know, to me, this looks like it's kind of like stretched. It just seems like, you know, that somebody did it in Microsoft Word and pulled it and stretched it out. I mean, I, I'm, I'm not encouraging us to go out and, you know, spend, you know, hire an advertising company to develop this. But this, to me, doesn't look very, you know, professional in terms of...
Okay.
The, the color, I'm fine with it. And look, I, I like the idea, it's the, you know, Middletown logo, a book. So to me, I recognize it as the Middletown Library. I'm just not comfortable with the font and the, you know, I'd like it to be completed before we see the full version.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Make a suggestion, it's Pat.
Yeah.
Jess and Tara in the PIO's office are extremely talented, especially Jess when it comes to things like this. I, have you reached out to either one of them?
I, I have, Pat. They, they've been a little busy right now, and I did tell them that this is not urgent. So they are aware of it. And I think once things settle down, they might have a little more time to, to help us develop this a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm sure they will. They're, they're very good at doing things like this, so it may be a good resource for you.
Great, thank you. And that's what I'll do then, once things settle down with Pat. We're okay with the color blue at least, so the blue, kind of, we can build off of that a little bit.
Build off of that, and I think maybe just better for us to also see the township's logo as well, just for next time, just something to reference to Susan's point. You know, I'm not even sure, sometimes I even, oh, there you go.
And I like, oh, yeah, right, now I recognize it, yeah, of course. Now I see it. And I agree with the committee woman, you know, to use the staff, the team over there with Tara and Jess, and maybe they'll come back with something. I'm even open to other colors, you know, if they have other thoughts, so, let's live wild.
Lindsay, I think you had some more feedback as well?
I'm done, it's fine.
Heather Dick McCumber, the only, the only thing, lawyers shouldn't design, design logos. When I look at the township, one of the things it says is "New Jersey."
Okay.
We have a Middletown, Connecticut, a Middletown, New York, and a Middletown, Pennsylvania.
Okay.
You might think about it, but that's...
That's an excellent point.
A written, it's a suggestion. And if you look at the townships, they, they put New Jersey in there, so it's just...
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't want to make it too long, maybe put the New Jersey under, in the next band, under Middletown Township Public Library, just, and the next band says New Jersey.
Okay.
Not a dissolved logo.
I'm going to come back for some, maybe some more ideas for, for June, for more drafts to look at then, thank you.
Heather, you just have on here right now the discussion of the annual report. Are you looking for us to, I'm just looking in interest of time.
It's just for you to have.
Just to have, uh, just for an interest of time, given that probably some of us have been on Zoom or Microsoft Teams or Cisco Webex, uh, virtual conference calls all day. Just for the interest of, I'm just looking at the time. You know, waiting for the announcement of the library to go off in about five minutes saying, you know, closes in 15.
I just wanted you to have the annual report, that's all. Just so you could have it, to see where we are, see where we're going.
Do we have to formally vote on this, since it says "vote new logo"?
I don't...
Uh, not on the, well, the logo, we're not voting, we're tabling until more drafts are coming up. Okay.
Mr. Bucko?
Yes.
I just had one question, because I'm, I'm in the office, so I'm typing the resolutions and changing them. And I just was looking at the minutes and, um, since Mr. Ph, and it may be something that Mr. McCumber has to answer. Since Mr. Curry was not here at the February meeting making him pro temp, would that be a conflict for him to sign minutes and approve minutes that he was not here for?
I think your point is...
I have no problems coming in and signing anything.
All right, so why don't we point Lindsay just to sign the February minutes or whatever?
Two pro temp secretaries for tonight?
Sure, why not? Let's go wild.
Right.
The fact that my kids have been quiet for about 90 minutes and I haven't heard bloody murder screams, it's, uh, if anything can happen.
A huge miracle.
So we have now gone to the public session of the agenda. The board encourages public participation. Individuals wishing to address the board shall be recognized by the presiding officer and shall give their names, addresses, and the group, if any, that they represent. Each speaker is asked to speak no longer than five minutes and limit their remarks to items on the meeting agenda. The board may use their discretion on whether to respond or not to questions during the public participation portion.
I'm muting our participants who, from the public, in case they would like to join us, just give me one second.
Yes, have their, just for the board's, the rest of the board's knowledge, in the announcement of our virtual meeting, we, the library did set up a special email account for if there were any members of the public that wished to submit written questions. Heather or Wendy, did we get any questions into that email?
We did not.
Heather was receiving the questions.
And we did not.
No, okay. Any member of the public?
I'm trying to unmute them. If, if anyone from the public would like to speak, if, if you'd like to unmute your, try unmuting yourselves, since I'm not...
You can try to type into the chat as well.
I'm trying to unmute, and it's not allowing me to. Here, let me try this. Okay, everyone should be unmuted. Yeah, everyone's unmuted.
Okay, is there anyone in the public that wished to make a comment on? Okay, seeing that there is none, for the good of the order. There again, I just would like to, again, express my gratitude to you, Heather, and to the entire staff of the library for really coming together and, during this pandemic, working in consultation with the township to ensure not only the health and safety of the employees, but also the health and safety of our residents. I know it's a lot of uncharted territories right now. This is something that we really haven't had to deal with. But your steady leadership and really has made what's a very challenging time for our community easier. So I'd just like to credit you, Wendy, Margaret, and the rest of the entire staff for their dedication, for thinking outside the box, for being, finding new ways to still try to be connected to the community as much as possible via, you know, virtually, or whether it's through social media, or whether it's through whatever it can be. So, again, kudos to you and to everyone else. I do look forward to the day that we're back in the library hosting these meetings. You know, but there again, just thank you again for, for what you have done. And, you know, please pass, and Wendy, you as well, and please pass it also to Margaret and the rest of the staff. On behalf of myself and the entire board, we do really appreciate the work that you have done and continue to do and the thoughtfulness of looking forward as well and not just dealing with the current time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If maybe I'll just go through who's on my grid here next. Pat?
Yes, hi. I'm good. I think everything is working well. I think the community is going to be pleased. And Heather, Bill, if there's anything I can relate or translate from the township committee, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Susan?
Yes, I just, I wanted to reiterate what you just said, Chairman, and really great work Heather, Wendy, Margaret, and the whole team on all the work that you've been doing. From the shields, the masks that you've been, that you created.
That was a fun project.
300 of those, wow, that's amazing. And then also announcing the $5,000 matching grant from National Endowment for the Arts. That's fabulous, really great. And I know you got some great press out of that, but really super, super work in a short amount of time and under extremely difficult circumstances. So congratulations and thank you, keep up the great work.
Rob?
Thanks, Heather, be well, stay healthy.
Thanks, you too.
Matt?
This is my first meeting, so nice to meet everybody. It's supposed to be a while back, but then we had these interesting times. So New Monmouth is right at the street from the library, we have a great relationship. We send our kindergarten there all the time. So I look forward to helping out in any way I can in that little bond between our schools and the library. So thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Lindsay?
Thank you for everything and stay healthy, safe.
Thank you, you too.
Jim?
Welcome to, to Mr. Ferry. We look forward to meeting you in person. And I have to echo, yeah, what everybody has said. Heather, it's been an interesting first eight months now. So far, we've had quite a, quite a ride so far. I just hope this isn't indicative of the entirety of your tenure with us.
Oh, my.
Everybody stay healthy, have a good night.
Thank you.
And on that, I will offer a motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone, have a great night, be well, be safe, and we will see you on June 2nd.
Okay, bye, everybody, stay well.